Good afternoon, thank you for joining us this afternoon. The first item on today's work session is a street closure request, University of Maryland. Kitty?
Good, I guess it's evening actually, good evening. My pot is in advance for my congestion, I hope I don't cough, I'll get through this efficiently. We're here tonight to seek approval for a new Level Two street closure. This is for a new event, the USMH Spirit Run 5K Race, which is scheduled for Saturday, June 1st. It's a new route and was created by the engineering department, the city engineering department, with input from USMH staff. USMH asked that this route pass several important landmarks, including University Plaza, the Walnut Street Clinic at 24 North Walnut, which is the home of USMH's Physicians Assistant Program, and the new student housing at 140 West Antietam Street. Hagerstown Police Department and Engineering crafted a thorough traffic control plan with the goal of runner safety and minimal impact as possible on traffic. The entire City Logistics Committee made up of members from HPD, Fire Marshal, Public Works, Parks and Engineering, Safety and Liability, and DCED have reviewed this event and recommend it going forward. This new event is one that will bring numerous people downtown in support of USMH, and additionally, people will experience several of Hagerstown's landmarks, both those that are complete and those that are in the works, including the Cultural Trail, the Plaza, and the renovations that are happening at 140 West Antietam. This is on tonight's agenda for a vote. So, any questions? We'll take them.
No questions for me? That's good to me.
Mr. Alt, is that, what street is that down, or is that down?
Um, I have to look, sorry, let me get my bearings again. That's the Cultural Trail.
Oh, that's down the trail, okay.
Yeah, that Wiggly thing is the Cultural Trail.
I didn't think there was a street there.
There's not a street there. Good catch.
Okay.
Thanks.
Kitty?
Yeah, thank you. That's a little better. Thanks.
And request to lease space at 14 North Temmy Street, Jill?
Thank you. We have a request for the small office on the second floor of the Elizabeth Hager Center Building, which is Suite 200C. The company is Somerset Fire Alarm and Security. The lease amount is 150 per month for approximately 132 square feet, and to start on March 1st. We're looking for a one-year term, and month-to-month after the first year with a 3% rent increase annually. The business would like to begin the lease March 1st, and we do have this as a part of the regular session packet. If you're agreeable to these lease terms, the documents are in the regular session packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is Don Watson's old space?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Domon Black Heritage Museum, little update?
Hello, Lizzie.
How are ya?
I'm doing okay, thank you.
Good. Everyone okay? We come before you this evening, first of all, thank you for allowing us this opportunity, and I also want to recognize the board members that are in the gallery. We have with us, to my left, Mr. Skip Davis, who is the president. We have with us in the gallery Mrs. Janice Kelch, who is our treasurer, Ms. Tamara Domon, who is the treasurer, Ms. Janice is the secretary, and Ms. Rosemary Domon Lucas, who is the executive director. My role here is as a liaison and projects director for the organization. We were made aware of some concerns that this body had with the incidents of last year that had come across you all's desk, and we wanted to first and foremost clear that air, but also to ask for the continued assistance with getting grant monies to acquire the building for the preconstruction phase, architectural preconstruction, as well as acquisitions of that building. In this packet that we have before you, you will see that there are grants that we are in the process, or we have applied for, there is a grant through you all under CBG that we have applied there. And we want to partner, again, with the city to do the SDF Strategic Demolition Grant through Department of Housing and Community Development, should we need to. What we would want to do is to apply for that grant, because the CBG grant is not announced until June or July. So we want to make certain that in the event that we only get partial funding there, that we already have something in place with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, already in the works. Also, we have the support of Delegate Quarterman, who is willing to advocate on our behalf with the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development because of some of those things that came across you all's desk last year. We also have the agreement with Delegate Barnes, who is also the chair for the Maryland Legislative Black Caucus, who is willing to advocate for this project within Annapolis. So, there has been a shortage of us doing what we need to do to clear those things out. Again, we know that there is the $12,000 loan agreement with you all that is coming up. We were, are asking that we could, because we didn't get the grant last year, if we could extend that payment out, beginning to pay that back out to you all, in the hopes of getting one of those two grants that we discussed. But we'd also like provisional funds to pay off that balance for that building, if at all possible, through the city coffers, so that we can, so that we don't lose the building, because that contract agreement is due to expire on March 31st. And I'm glad that Mr. Skip sent this to you all in a letter, because I kind of ran through that, didn't I?
So you're requesting an extension of the $12,000, and then, I'm sorry, what was your next request? Provisional funding?
Yes, which would be the same opportunity as it was with the loan for the down payment. We were anticipating and hoping that we would get those funds, but because there was so much, and this is what we were told, because there were so many people vying for those funds, and they were already heavily invested in the theater project, that they said, try again with the next opening, which would be this year.
And when would those funds be granted? If you were to...
Well, last year it would be taken, well, first of all, we're not certain when that comes out, because it used to come out twice a year. Now it only comes out, as of last year, it only comes out once a year. And we worked with city staff, and we put that application in in May, we didn't find out anything until October, or November, that we didn't, didn't, not get the funds, yeah.
And so the original repayment wouldn't start until when?
Until after we just find out if we were granted either of those loans at that point.
I see. So maybe October, November, if you're thinking that they do the same thing, and notify you that you were awarded it, or weren't, okay.
And this is the same, the same way that most nonprofits are funded in our community, it's called forward funding, alcoholic provisional. So, I mean, it's the same way that the theater got their funding, you know, someone put it up until they were able to get the grant. So we're asking for that statement.
So, in the packet of information that you provided, are all of the individuals that are on the board listed on the packet of information that you provided?
Are they?
Are all of the members of the board, okay. Because you're right, you know, we've gotten information, I'm sure that information's got sent out to other, you know, various elected officials and elected bodies, information that frankly, at times, is confusing to receive, because, you know, as individuals sitting here, we're not, you know, we're not directly vested in the process that you've undertaken, so, you know, the knowledge that we get through that information sharing may or may not be, at times, factual, but we don't have that ability to sort of interject ourselves within, you know, that depth of the process, to know some of that fact from fiction, it's just the reality.
Exactly, as my mother would say, it takes a pound of lies to get an ounce of truth.
So, I'm trying to sort of, you know, resolve that in my mind, and my conscience frankly, you know, in continuing to move forward, and I'll say the same thing, again, this evening that I said the last time we met, is, you know, we've been talking about this item for a long time.
Right.
There is a lot of material artifacts within, you know, this effort and this collective process that exists, and, you know, I remember a tour of the community for clinic one time, where Mike Stanford, you know, took us on, and he said, "Look, you know, I can get, I can get money for TVs all day, but, you know, unless I got a place to put these things in, unless I've got an operational commodity set up, you know, you're not getting to that point." And so, when you guys brought this building forward, I think that that has been the continued issue. Unless you've got a place to call home, no one's ever going to provide the funding that you need to make that home run. It's just, it's just the way it works in the charitable world. And so, I think I would be comfortable with the request that's been made if there was some provision included within that transaction where the city had some shorty against it. In other words, you know, if you're looking for us to extend the $12,000 for some period of time, we could say, "Sure, we can do that for the next six months." I mean, I just don't think that that's going to cause any consternation here, but this provisional amount of securing the remainder for the building, I would be okay with that if there was something in there that said, "Hey, things don't work out, this doesn't end up being the spot, the timeframe doesn't end up getting met, that's the city's building." Because, you know, we can't provide that shorty for that, for that level, unless we have some recourse to say, "If it doesn't work out, at least we have some collateral to then recoup, you know, that loss that we've stuck out on." And that, I would propose that as sort of a compromise to get to that point.
That makes sense, I mean, that is something that the board would have to take back to their, to their legal representative to say.
And, I mean, the goal at the end of the day is that everything works out, you know what I mean? We extend it, you get the funding that you need, and you finally get a place to say, "Okay, now we've got a place," then you guys get to go to the bigger hitters, much bigger than ourselves, to say, "Now we've got a place, now let's do what it takes to get it up and running." And I don't think those dominoes fall into place unless you've secured the location. And so, the only way I would do it is if to say, "Hey, what's the valuation of the building?" You know what I mean? And, you know, can we pledge enough of a shorty against it to say, you know, that we're sort of, you know, first in line in any type of default process, to say, "Didn't work out, let's go sell the property." You know, can we get 100,000 back out of it? And I don't, I don't know the answer to that. But, you know, the reality is, and I, this sort of goes almost like a Plan B stage, is it isn't like this building is in the middle of nowhere, if you will, as it applies to activities in the neighborhood. We have a park right next door, you know what I mean? So it isn't as if the end of the day, you're in this dire need, you know, to sort of dump the property. If in the event you say, "Look, it didn't work out, you know, we either sell the property if that doesn't work out, you know, we have park space directly adjacent," and it becomes something else, and that's way too far down the road, and, you know, and, but at least for me, in my mind, it gives me some assurance, you know, that there's a way to, I guess, reach a common goal.
And we can use, and we can use CD funds for acquisition of this piece of property.
I, yeah, I just, I don't want to get to the, to a point where we're sitting on another, and, you know, a penny will come strike me when I say this, another Almond House. You know what I mean? Where we're sitting here 12 years later going, we've got this big building, and it's filled with pigeons, you know, and nobody knows what to do with it.
Well, I think...
So, I'd want to...
I'm going to put on my resident of the Jonathan Street neighborhood, the majority of my life, and say that if it doesn't work out for the Domons, and the city gets that building, I feel more confident that you all would attract something positive in that neighborhood than having this building set idle for another decade.
Everybody recognizes the building, because everybody recognizes the building.
And the building has set idle for 35 years.
I hear you.
So, I mean, even, even if DBHM is not successful in making it their home, with the city owning that building, then yes, there is another plan that you all could devise, or that someone, and I'm saying this as a resident, no building should be allowed to set in Hagerstown idle for 35 years. No building anywhere, but especially in a neighborhood such as that, where something positive could be placed there. So, I'm, I'm okay with that, but again, that is a board decision, and as you see and as you've noticed, they have board members, and they've always had board members, though. Yeah, that's for them to decide if that would be feasible to them, but I like that plan, and I like it not only as a representative for the organization, but as a resident, and I live on Jonathan Street.
I think it was important for me this evening to understand that, that the presentation that you have made, and the information included, is one of unanimous, signature by the entire board, because I can tell you, before this evening, I did not have that interpretation of activities, even among the board, and so, like I said, that's just, that's just part and parcel to the information that we've received, in not having the ability to, you know, square away, you know, what, what those perceptions and realities are.
They have a full board and an advisory board, and the advisory board was just put together and actually went into effect this month. But in their, on their advisory board come professionals from all across the United States who have supported this project from, since 2008. So these, these are the people that have been helpful along the way all this time, and now they've become the advisors, and if you look at their backgrounds, you will see that it's, it's called a multicultural business advisory board committee, and it's done so that these things are done properly, so that the board has someone to glean what they're doing and say, "Okay, we can, this is where," experts in their field, they can say, "This is where this should work, and this was, this is where it shouldn't." And all of this was born out of the ugliness that came across you all's desk last year. So, I mean, if anything, it created a better organization.
I would just, I would just throw out there for you guys, for me, if it was just the 12,000, I would consider that extension for six months. If it's the provisional of the remainder, for me, it would be 12 months, and, and a shorty, you know, associated with the ability to own and dispose of it after that 12-month period.
So for council action, we see two separate actions. One will be a response to the letter that I had forwarded last week in regard to what you can do with the $12,000 grant, to make a formal answer to that for consideration by the council, and then the second follows along Christians, a formal request to defer the $108,000. Make it as two separate requests for the council to consider.
I'm just, I'm just one person.
And I have no problem.
Kicking out an idea.
It is, it's two separate, I think it would help Michelle for the audit process that we have, to have two separate actions to go through for the council.
I also think, just as you have to go back to the board, that we have to talk to Michelle, because we're just kind of making stuff up every, as far as if we, you know, if we can, if we have the money. I'm not opposed to Kristen's idea at all. That's what I'm saying, that's, that has to come from her, if we have the money, but I don't want that building, I want you guys to have that building. So, are you confident, I mean, are you confident that you can make it work? We all know what was said last year, there were some pretty hefty allegations that I'm sure were very frustrating for you guys to deal with, but if, let's say, today you have that building, you feel you still have the collection, you have the people in place, you're ready to...
Well, it goes without saying that that Domon family collection is at our disposal. We have a 50-year loan agreement with the Domon family. That collection has been in existence since 1974, and in Hagerstown. Our goal is to have it be seen and showcased as, as a destination for Hagerstown, which is a whole different set of, of positive economic growth for that community, and of course, we have, we have pastors, new pastors that have come into town, who have great plans for that neighborhood, you know, as far as revitalization, using that museum as the anchor. But I do want to also, Mr. Watson's here, or he is the museum attorney, he would like to say something?
I just wanted to add, in response to Kristen's comment, that I don't see any difficulty in providing security for the purchase fund that makes.
So, I mean, with that being said, it didn't, again, like I made the flippant comment about what my mother used to say, that it takes a pound of lies to get an ounce of truth. There was very little truth in what came across you all's desk last year. There was never a question of whether or not this body wanted to move forward. This was something that, that person that came in and did that, he wasn't aware that there was always a statement of basic fact that this organization was moving to that end since 2008, with the aid of the city of Hagerstown. So, not being certain about that, and just wanting to be ugly for whatever reason, that happened. I want to dispel another, another rumor that was sent out there as well, sent out there as well, and that is that this organization is being investigated by the Attorney General's Office. First and foremost, any investigation or claims against a nonprofit does not go to the Attorney General's Office, it goes to the Maryland Secretary of State, and they investigate nonprofit organizations. In your packet, you will see that there is the statement from the Maryland Secretary of State, the charities, Maryland charities, that this organization is in full compliance. The Tamara spoke with an investigator there, there has never been a claim against the Domon Black Heritage Museum, and there's not an investigation happening now. So, I go on record from, and show you that proof, that that is not the case. So again, pound of lies, ounce of truth.
I happened to call them about two weeks ago, and same comment, I mean, the same thing, but we are not under investigation, we are in compliance.
And their suggestion to the organization was to take this documentation and put it on their website, so that everyone can see that, but we're starting here tonight, calming you all's fears, because you all have worked with the Domon family, as well as the organization, to see this come to Hagerstown, or see it be highlighted in Hagerstown, and we should not allow the efforts of one or two people to stop this from happening.
One other comment I would like to make is, this board is fully supportive of Alicia and the things that she's done over the years to help our organization grow. So I want to clear anything up that we are in, divided among ourselves. We clearly know who we want, and who is leading us and guiding us and helping us.
Okay, so, we're going to get, why two motions again, you have to explain that to me again, because it's over my head.
Two separate financial transactions. One is the initial $12,000 grant, as a request to defer it, and the second then is for the $108,000, using Kristen's language, for us to get everything that we need in line, satisfies the auditor, since it's two separate actions.
Does their board need to know that?
Is, that's a request that you want from DBHM?
Yes.
Okay, not a problem.
Yes. It's formal, so we can have two acts, just formal requests.
So you want them in two separate correspondence?
Correct, if you would.
Not a problem.
Yep, thank you.
Not a problem.
I want to thank you guys for allowing us to come and talk, and to meet you again, and thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Always a pleasure.
Mike, you're up, Professional Boulevard. You want to change seats?
Yeah, I can.
No.
Hello. Rodney will be joining us, so you may go back and forth as each of us.
Coming up too.
Have a hard day.
My goodness.
Never been called that.
The Professional Boulevard extension and the Associated Bridge was, has been a topic of discussion for a few years, since I've been here, Rodney's been working through it, and it was one of the first topics that was detailed and great importance between discussion between the county administrator, Rob Slocum, and myself. Originally, when we started the process, there was no tie with our annexation process that's currently going on. The Board of County Commissioners had requested that we delay the express annexation vote, while Rob, Rodney, and the rest of county staff and I just worked through some of the 10,000-feet issues that we could see in regard to our acceptance of the bridge and the roadway. So the five of us all got together, we basically had the same thoughts, processes crossed our mind, and we put together six points, I did add a one to seven on the end, as we considered it a little bit more. What we thought is, if we received a verbal approval tonight from this body for us to continue to work on the process in the development of a memo of understanding for our acceptance of Professional Boulevard and to the bridge itself. The seven, six points that we basically came through the first time were the Stormwater Pond, which there's an agreement between Chief and Washington County at the moment for responsibilities. We see that as a future discussion with Chief, if we would want to amend the agreement that's in place now, it is in place for 10 years, for who does all of the maintenance on the Stormwater Pond, so it's something that we can discuss future. It's really a small-ticket item that we consider for maintenance in the future. The streets themselves, we basically go through the same process that the city utilizes when we take over city streets that have been developed for us by anyone who's a developing part of the city. Rodney, in discussion with the state highway, we know how much highway user revenue fund we received, approximately $9,000 per mile, so we just did a quick calculation on here for discussion purposes. If we banked that for 20 years, we would have $180,000 for the replacement of the surface if needed, which at this time, we feel is more than enough in a funding package to do any work along those, along those avenues. Plowing, looking ahead, right now, the city would only annex part of it, be responsible, the roadway would continue up to Yale Drive, we can work out with the county as we do in other places where we'd continue to plow up to where it makes sense, so one doesn't stop, and the county begins. It's just common sense for how we operate with a few of our streets.
And you have that, right, you have that currently.
We have that currently in place, yes, we do other streets within the city. All copies of agreements, the county would turn over to us on that, once, if we accept that all of the highway and the bridges, they will continue to maintain the four seasons in perpetuity, so that was a great addition that they've offered to work through with us on that. Once again, on the big-ticket items, the county staff, they'll complete the design bidding, construction of the street system and the bridge, including the professional court portion, which is within city limits currently, which is on the west side of the bridge, the new bridge to be, to be constructed. The funding for that is approximately $2.5 million. They will assist us in any type of ARC funding or other sources of revenue that we can get to offset those costs. The bridge itself, we understand, and that's a major investment that stays with us for many years. Right now, federal aid is designated as 80% of the funding source for repairs of bridges. Rodney and I, in our discussions, the county has agreed, will split the remaining 20% equally between the two groups, and they will be the administrator, basically, of any federal funding that we request for that. The last item was requested by the county, and just that we will make every effort to assure the annexation includes the road and bridge properties before construction occurs, and I believe later on tonight, this body will take action to assure them that that will occur. Those are just the high-end points that Rodney and I, and Rob Slocum, Scott Hobbs, and Andrew Ullman had worked through in our discussions. Once again, it's the direction of this body that Rodney and I work for, but from an operating standpoint, this is what the combined staffs felt that both sides could, could work with in the future. that both sides could, could work with in the future. Rodney, have anything?
The, the big-ticket items, the, the construction money for the widening of our professional court. And when we've talked about that in the past, in this administration or even the prior administration, it was always, if it was tied to annexation, we would consider doing that. And I guess what we're trying to do is put all this together now and have a formal agreement on that.
Was, was that the amount that was tied to those initial discussions?
For the cost? It's probably, it's, I think originally we were using $2 million, but the last engineer's estimate I have is two and a half, because we're making some improvements out on Eastern Boulevard, too, to the signals.
And that's $2.5 million of, of, what's the total project cost?
The bridge is six or seven million itself. And then, the county, the rest of the counties works about another two or three million. So, that adds up to like 10. They're paying for the bridge 100% between county funds and funds that they've acquired through grants.
It's always been envisioned that we would be responsible for the widening of the professional court.
I have no problem with, I think, the county staff, I'm glad we have good staff to do this.
I agree.
Better, better than the elected officials trying to get it done.
Are, the Stormwater Pond, is that a new or old one?
New. It's, it was built in the last couple of years.
So, it has the, the state MS4?
Yep.
Uh, design construction?
Well, it's mostly for water quantity control. So, when you look at it, it looks like a, kind of a 1980s quantity control. The, the plan was always that the quality control measures for stormwater would be done on each site. And that's, so this is just volume. But, they are planning it full of trees to help with the... Water quality issue. Water quality issues, too. And the county's on the hook for that.
But, there's no additional retrofit required for that pond as part of MS4?
Correct.
And do you have an estimate for item number six, the routine maintenance associated with the bridge?
I mean, it would be absorbed into our operating work. We have 13 other bridges in the city, so public works would do that kind of work. I could see, you know, 20 years from now, the bridge needs a new deck. And that could be $2 million, so if, just to give you...
But, that's a major capital.
That's a major capital and that's where they would get...
Have we defined what they, like, if we define routine versus major?
We should probably do more than what we've done on here.
I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, I'm assuming the state has some definition of what that is?
Exactly. I think what we'd be able to define is what is a major capital that the state will give federal aid for. We can get that definition and then I guess everything else would be routine.
Okay. Could you explain number seven a little bit? Is that just a summary of the acceptance of the first six points? Or is it, I, I don't understand how that reads.
I, I, in my opinion, speaking with Rob, it, it, once again, the assurance was just that we would continue the product, the, the process of annexation that it didn't stall somewhere, which we had new designs installing the process.
I guess I'm still not following. That, the item we're talking about right now, the annexation we're talking about right now?
Correct.
Okay.
In which right now, design...
Not that it's not, not tied to...
It's not tied to...
Additional annexations of additional land within...
It is the annexation at hand is what he was referring to.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, that's...
Which, which just contains the portion of the highway that we've spoken about.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like we're headed in the right direction, so...
So, we'll continue to flesh out a memorandum of understanding that both bodies will see and vote on at some point in time.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're adjourned until 7 o'clock.